Good evening. Today is July 21st, 2020. Our thought for today is life is 10% what happens to you, and 90% of how you react to it. That's by Charles R. Swindle. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. We want to go ahead and thank you guys for being here tonight for our second meeting of July. We have special guests with us here tonight. I am so excited. They are my family. Pastor and First Lady Lamar and Elsie Bell. If you would, please come up. Faith of Jesus Ministries. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you guys for being here tonight. I think Faith of Jesus Ministries has been in our community for now, I think since, I think, 1997 or something like that. Yeah. They do a wonderful job. They are out on the west side of Newton County. They actually near, they actually are really close to my dad. So we're walking distance to the church. They do a lot in this community and they provide a lot to help this community. And guys, we want to thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for what you do in our community. If you will, if you want to say a couple of words and then just pray for our community. I'm gonna ask a special prayer tonight for a close friend of mine, Ms. Lisa Connor. She was my first executive assistant. And she is going through a battle right now. But we know that the Lord, he is able and, you know, he is able to heal. And we believe him. We believe that he can do that. So if you will, please include her in your prayer tonight.
Amen. Well, we would just like to say how much we really feel like it's a pleasure and an honor to be in your presence today. And just your commitment to the county. We really appreciate it and we thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. It's a privilege and honor to be here, to be asked to lead in prayer. And as we yield ourselves under the mighty hand of God, I just say that you be in agreement with the prayer being rendered because he says, "When two or three are gathered in his name," that he's there in the midst of us.
Yes.
So being in one accord is very essential. So let us bow here in prayer. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come according to your word. And your word says that come boldly to the throne of grace, that we might receive help in a time of trouble.
Yes, Lord.
And these are troublesome times, Father. And we stand on your word, Lord, because you said, "Great shall be the peace of your children."
Yes.
And Lord, we're your children. And we come now standing on your word that, Lord, all things are moving by your power.
Yes.
And Father, as we come boldly and we stand in the gap for Ms. Connor, who's under attack, Lord, we believe that you said your word and you healed. So Father, we receive healing for her from the crown of her head to the sole of her feet, Lord. And we believe and receive it done. And Father, for this community, for this board here to make quality decisions, to be on one accord, we thank you for giving them both the mind and the will to do as you would pleasure. So Father, as we stand in agreement, believing and receiving your word, Lord, that all is well. Because, Lord, we can do nothing without you. But we can do all things through and by your anointing which strengthens us. So we say, Lord, with one accord, with oneness of heart and oneness of mind, Lord, thy will be done. Your will be done in this community and in this world, Lord. We just give you praise for what's going to take place as we yield ourselves unto you. We give you all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much. I got something I want to give to you guys, but thank you so much for that. Lisa is not only a dear friend, but she is an employee of Newton County. And, you know, our hearts go out to her with the things that she's battling right now. But thank you so much for what you do in this community, Pastor and First Lady. And First Lady actually served on the Water Authority. And she's doing a great job representing District 2. And she does a great job. So I do have a little appreciation gift here for you guys. And do you like that? I'm sorry, Mom. I gotta do you like that.
You're good.
But if you will, if you come around here and we just, we'll get a picture. Thank you so much for what you do. I'm sorry. My bad. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Guys, also, before we do the pledge, we want to make sure that we announce that Commissioner Stan Edwards is here tonight. He is here by phone. Commissioner Edwards, would you, can you please say something to verify that you're here tonight?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am here. I appreciate you allowing me to join by phone.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, we're gonna ask Commissioner Mason, if you would, lead us in our pledge tonight. Commissioners, we got a couple, we got another one change, two changes that we have for the agenda tonight. We want to remove item number 21. Remove item number 21. And on number 13, that should be fire station number 2 instead of fire station number 1. We want to remove item number 21. And that, on 13, that should be fire station number 2, not number 1. And after that, I seek a motion that we approve this, that we approve this agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any questions? All in favor? If passed, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Edwards, are you in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Hey, I'm here. Sorry.
Hey, can you, can you say whether you are in favor of passing this, approving this agenda, please?
I'm in favor of passing the agenda. Yes.
Thank you, sir. The pass is five to zero. Our next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments on agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come up and state your name, your address for the record, please. Citizen comments, agenda topic only. Anyone like to make comments? Thank you. That portion of our agenda, citizen comments, is closed. Next, we have the chairman's report. Tonight, we have our sheriff, Isaiah Brown, with us tonight. Our sheriff has received his reaccreditation for the National Commissioner of Correctional Healthcare. And he gonna come up and tell us a little bit about it. I think he has someone who has called in, who's calling in, Sheriff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, those of you that make up this board tonight and those of you who are in the audience, as well as those who may be looking and listening from afar, if you stay positive in any negative situation, then you win. You win. I am honored to stand here tonight, Mr. Chair. As I always tell my staff, no good work goes unnoticed. And what we're about to receive tonight, as well as what we're going to talk about tonight, is all about their hard work and their leadership skills. And I also like to just thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing the office of sheriff to take up this slot on the agenda. We are being presented here today because the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, NCCHS, conference that we would have typically, a normal, would have received this, would have been May 2nd through May 5th of this year in Atlanta. But it was canceled due to the COVID crisis that we're in. As I always like to mention, and I'm sure that it will be mentioned later on, out of more than 3,100 law enforcement agencies throughout the nation, there are now 48 whom have obtained the Triple Crown. And this is a component of the Triple Crown. Forty-six of those are sheriff's offices throughout the nation. What is unique about this is only six in the state of Georgia have received and attained the NCCH accreditation. And we happen to be one of those components who make up the three accreditations needed, again, for the status of the Triple Crown. I'd like to recognize some of our guests here on tonight. I have my staff here. If you would just please stand. I have Lieutenant Williams, Lieutenant, First Lieutenant Smith, and my administrative assistants, Ms. Birch. And I have other guests that I will call their name in person here. We have Ms. Beverly Carter, who is the Newton County SO Medical Unit Supervisor. She's the HSA. She's the person in charge there. And along with her, we're happy to have in person tonight, Mr. Brad McLean. He is the CEO of NAF Care. Grateful to have him with us tonight. And I'd just like to also mention that I have a special friend here who is an auditor for the NCCHC. And this is a dear friend of mine, Mr. Abbott Murray. And I hope that I can twist Mr. Murray's arm a little later on to do some work for us. In the Zoom, we will have Dr. Jeffrey Alvarez. And that's the lead auditor of the NCCHC. So I would ask that this time, I'm not sure how they are going to present this, but I would ask that Mr. Brad McLean come forward along with my staff, along with our HSA supervisor. And we'll try our best to keep our distance here. Brad?
Thank you, Sheriff. It's, it's an honor to be here. Brad McLean, I'm the chief executive officer of NAF Care. We crossed a milestone recently with you, July 1st. That marks 14 years of us working with you as your correctional healthcare partner. And we're really honored to be your correctional healthcare partner. We see a lot of jails across the country. Sheriff Brown runs one of the cleanest, best-run jails in the country, hands down. Everyone on my team will tell you that. He is an amazing sheriff. He has an amazing team. And we really love working, working with you. Sheriff Brown always talks about his team as a family and us as part of the family. I couldn't agree more. And I couldn't ask for a better philosophy and a partner. The quality of care that we're able to provide has been improving and is very high. We are just grateful for the partnership with custody. Without that, we couldn't provide the level of care we're providing. And we're grateful to you for improving our staff. The staff we had at the beginning of 2018 was not what it needed to be. And, and we were really calling out for enhancing the staff so we could improve the level of care. Now, we have, back in about, early 2018, we had about 13 full-time employees on our, on our staff. Now, we have 17.35. That puts you more in the average as far as the staffing you have in your facilities. We really couldn't have had the success we've had and gotten you the accreditation without that investment in correctional healthcare. So we're tremendously grateful to you for, for making that investment. With me, of course, I have Beverly Carter, who's the Health Services Administrator who runs the staff and the program here in Newton County. And on the phone, I have Dr. Jeffrey Alvarez, who is our chief medical officer and, and probably the greatest doctor in correctional medicine. I don't know if Dr. Alvarez can, can speak. Can we hear you? Okay. You can barely hear him. He's there and listening in. So if you have any questions for us, our, you know, our team is, is here. Another thing we're grateful to you and the county for doing is during this COVID crisis, you've been really effective at changing some things to reduce the jail population. That's one of the main tools that, one of the main tools in the toolbox that we can use during this pandemic is to reduce that population so we're able to manage it better and spread people out. Everyone who comes into the jail goes into a, a unit for 14 days. So it's effectively group quarantine. And that's one of the main tools that we have if COVID gets into the jail, to keep it contained. And so by reducing that population during this pandemic, you've given us the ability to really manage it. We've been tremendously successful in our facilities throughout the country. I've read and know some horror stories. I keep knocking on wood, praying, crossing my fingers that we continue to be successful. But you're, you're a part of that. You're part of that solution. We did just get the NCCHC accreditation, 100% compliance on all of the applicable standards. Without teamwork, we couldn't have done that. And only about 15% of counties across the, the country have that accreditation. And of course, you're well above that with your, your Triple Crown status. So as I look to the future, we're really interested in expanding our partnership. We've developed some software tools that we want to use to work with mental health courts and drug courts to help get folks out of jail who don't need to be in jail more quickly, get them connected to care, reduce recidivism. I was just talking to Sheriff Brown and his team about if there's a match for you for that software. One of these days, we're gonna charge for it. Right now, we're giving it away. We're just so excited about the potential that it's gonna have to help our clients and the communities and the patients that, that we serve. And, you know, one of the dreams I have looking to the future is to do even more with mental health in the jail. We've, we've done something really incredible at Fulton County, Georgia. We've developed a mental health stabilization unit where Fulton County invested more in mental health. And we've gone from patients who were in, in a segregation cell, decompensating, not doing well, to those patients getting the kind of therapy they need to recover and functioning normally and able to leave the, the jail with a prayer and a hope of not coming back. We recently had a graduation ceremony for the first class of individuals in the Mental Health Stabilization Unit of Fulton County. And I don't think anyone there got out of there without at least a tear. So, you know, it's, there's more we can do to broaden our partnership. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. Just grateful for the partnership and thank you. Is there anything else, Sheriff?
Any questions, guys?
I know you have a packed agenda, so.
So y'all gonna, you gonna present the award now?
I, I don't think that, I don't think we actually have the, the award to present other than just to, to, to just announce our success in getting the accreditation. There will be a plaque, but I don't think we have it today for a photo op. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, great news. Great news.
Yeah, Dr. Alvarez, was there anything you wanted to add? If the commission can hear you.
It's very difficult here, but I just wanted to say,
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Sheriff, for the hard work that you and your team do. We know it's definitely a tough job, especially now dealing with COVID. And you guys went out and got it reaccredited. So congratulations to you and your team.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda is Mr. Kerr. Guys, we have about eight minutes or so. You do it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few things this evening. First slide, please. Thank you, Brian. Go ahead.
This first slide will show you our, our total employee population. We, over the past month, we've hired 20 new employees and we've separated three. Our total population right now stands at 703. This does include all of the seasonal election workers that we have. And right now, with the, obviously, with all, with the elections and the primaries and all, we do have quite a few people on, on staff. Next slide is the permits report. You'll see that we are still continuing to build quite a few homes. During this past month, we've had 74 permits issued and we're actually increasing those numbers. And as well as with the commercial permits. So we're looking at the increase in the value of properties here. Next slide there shows our work orders by district. District 1 has the largest number with 100 still. But you can see they're fairly evenly spread out throughout the districts, with the exception of District 4. A lot of the area in District 4 is within Incorporated areas, so it's naturally gonna be a little lower. Elmig resurfacing projects in June. You'll see in those districts and the roads, Christian Circle, Crooked Creek, Dove Point, Hidden Shoals, and so forth. The project that we're working on out of the 2011 Sploes, Sherwood Forest, other things that we're working on currently, we're continuing a project that we started in Riverwalk Farms. Those of you who may live there are, are familiar with it. There were a lot of street trees that were planted along the roadways, in between the roads and sidewalks. And now that they're about 20 years old, they've had quite a few sidewalks that have been buckled by the tree roots. So we're going in and removing the trees and repairing the sidewalks. And also, we've been installing bike route signs on routes that are north of I-20 to allow for those people who utilize Newton County to, as a recreation area, to follow the bike routes that have been established throughout the county and are located actually on the state map and to help those people as wayfinding. And that's all that I have on my report for tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've got a little time, so we'll move, move down to, I'm sorry. Commissioner Henderson, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lord, and, and I notice, you know, I notice kind of not part of the report that you're giving us, but I think we need a report as, as for, like, typically what cities and, and I guess states view is, what's the amount of, of COVID people who are infected, the amount of wounds who are hospitalized? And then we need somebody to tell us the amount of death. And where are the hotspots? Because I was, I was one of the last people to know that there was a hotspot at the courthouse over here. And I learned first about the testing that was being done there, there too. So we, we need an update. And we need to make sure that the public be aware. If they are, then know where they are. And so people feel a little more secure when they know what's going on in that community.
I'll be glad to include the reports from the, information from the Department of Health and pass on to you, sure.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve it, please. If in motion by Commissioner Henderson, can I get a second? If in motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any question? Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's a, that's an I from District 1.
Thank you, sir. The pass is five to zero. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It is approximately 7:29 now. We're gonna go ahead and get ready to move into our public hearing. Ms. Shana, please, if you would come, please. You doing okay today?
I feel okay, yes.
You are?
Yes, sure, I am.
You had a great work day?
I did.
You did? You know, I'm stalling because we just a minute early.
I'll have to do something.
I want to make sure that nobody say that we didn't do things appropriately. Yeah. We're so thankful for you for filling in tonight. We know Ms. Judy is up here filling in for Ms. Jackie. And that's what One Newton is all about. That's what teamwork is all about. So we greatly appreciate you guys and all that you do. But it is 7:30 now, so we can get going.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. And good evening, commissioners and board. Today, our first case today is a conditional use permit. Case number is, excuse me, I have to click on. So the case number is CUP 19-000007. The proposed use is a parsonage for church's ministry located at 84 and 100 Usher Road. The parcel size is 14.54 acres. And the tax ID, tax parcel, is 16-105, 106, and 26. Future land use is residential and public lands. And the existing zoning is currently agricultural residential. It is located in the South River watershed in Commissioner District 2. And the owner is the Faith of Jesus Ministries, Inc. And the petitioner is Pastor Lamar Bell. The applicant's intent is to allow an adjoining lot within an existing residential home to come by and with the place of worship for use as a parsonage of the church's ministries. And the subject site in the surrounding area, the subject is located on Usher Road at 84 and 100. It is zoned AR and currently is developed with a 9,600 square foot church. There's also a 1,200 square foot residential home adjoining this property that is under the request to be a parsonage. This is an aerial showing the location of the home that is to become a parsonage, as well as the existing church on Usher Road. And this is a survey that was submitted, just to make sure we had our boundaries and everything correct. This is our zoning, agricultural residential zoning. And given that this property has been historically used for institutional uses, including place of worship and daycare, staff recommends of worship and daycare, staff recommends approval for the conditional use permit in accordance with Section five-ten dash four-eight-zero-C four. And our recommended conditions, if this petition is approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for conditional use permit for a parsonage or caretaker's house on a conditional basis subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated stipulations. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And the first recommendation is a minor plat must be submitted and approved to combine the three lots within three months of approval by this board today of the conditional use permit. The second one is conditional use permit is to be brought back to the planning commission for review two years after the approval date to confirm use has been kept in compliance with the zoning ordinance requirements and the conditions. Oh, so just the two conditions. And I believe Pastor Bell is here, applicant, and are there any questions?
Any questions, guys? Thank you. At this time, we're going to open it up for our public hearing. For the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come up at this time and state your name, your address, please, for the record. You may do so at this time if you would like. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor. If you guys want to say anything, you can at this time. You don't, you don't have to, but if you would like to, you can. If you would, please, if you would, please.
Again, thank you for your consideration of the parsonage for the ministry. And just want to thank you guys for your concern and care about what's going to take place at the parsonage. And again, with everything that was read, we are totally in agreement with what's been said and done. And that's specifically what we are requesting of this committee. So again, thank you for your consideration and thank you for doing what you do. It's a great job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose. If you want to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. You have ten minutes to do so as well. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone wants to oppose? Anyone wants to oppose? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. I think this is District two. Commissioner Mason, what, what we hear?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve CUP one-nine dash zero 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 seven with staff conditions.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just, just have a comment and I just, just want to thank Pastor Bell and First Lady Bell and, and that church for being a solid rock in, in our community. And I saw many good things about the church and the peoples and, and some of the people who helped, especially in the, with the kids. And we want to thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District one.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Thank you so much. It's that one.
Our second case for the evening is rezoning. Case number is REZ twenty dash zero 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 six. Location is on Bates Road. Current zoning is agricultural and the future is agricultural residential. Watershed is Bear Creek, our Alkovee River, and the size of the parcel is twenty point two acres. The tax parcel is one oh six dash zero four nine and it is located in Commissioner District one. Owner is Ms. Betty Bates Smith and the petitioner is Ernest C. Smith. The applicant's intent is to rezone the parcel from agricultural to agricultural residential for the purposes of settling a family estate. The subject site in the surrounding area, the site is a twenty point zero-two acre parcel located on the east side of Bates, Bates Road. It currently has a zoning of agricultural and is undeveloped with a family cemetery located on it. This is an aerial showing the location of the subject parcel. And we have the current zoning, which is agricultural. Our future land use map is residential. It's, yeah, it's hard to see. This is a survey that was submitted showing the boundaries of the subject parcel and a concept plan of what they would like to do. That shows the cemetery being subdivided out. In the site plan analysis based on the site plan submitted on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, by the applicant to Development Services, staff offers the following considerations. The conclusion is, given the fact that the property is zoned A and in close proximity of similar existing zonings such as agricultural residential, along with applicant's proposed uses of the land, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate for the site. Recommended conditions, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved agricultural residential conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, a minor plat of the newly created parcels must be recorded and provided to Development Services. B, the new, oh, the two new created parcels of nine point one-two-seven acres and ten point zero-two-six acres may not be subdivided into any parcel less than two acres. And C, any required permits must be obtained from the Development Services Department before any construction or development on the property. And that concludes that. And I believe Mr. Smith is here, Chairman.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you. This is the opportunity now we opened up our public hearing. We, for the, it's the opportunity for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come there and state your name, your address for the record, please.
My apologies. I'm Ernie Smith, by the way. I live in Covington and this is, was the family farm. Sorry to have to trouble you with this. As it turns out, mother has passed and this is the final bit of business as far as her estate is concerned, so settling it between myself and my brother. He has decided not to keep any of the property at all or to keep it in the family trust. He wishes to sell his portion of it. We haggled it down to one lot of nine point one-three acres, as you saw, and then the rest will remain with, with, with the family. It is designed to be sold and probably will be developed residentially. Any questions at this point?
Commissioner Edwards, you have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good. Thank you. And sorry to trouble you again.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? You may come at this time. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve REZ two-zero dash zero 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 six with staff recommended conditions.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District one.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Okay. Next is item number twenty-four, Development, Development Service Resolution R zero-seven-two-one-two-zero. County Attorney Sam. Bokenberg. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So this is a resolution adopting ordinance changes to implement state restrictions on local regulation of timber operations. The purpose of the resolution is to update the county's ordinances to be in accordance with relatively recently passed statute, OCGA Section twelve-six-twenty-four, that I believe was passed at the behest of the timber industry because it seeks to prevent counties from imposing their own permitting systems on timber harvesting operations and seeks to create a uniform timbering permitting and notice system throughout the state. As a result, we are going to have to change the following sections of the Unified Development Ordinance of the County, four oh five thirty, four fifteen one hundred, four twenty eighty, four twenty one thirty, four twenty-five forty, one thousand one hundred and ten twenty, one thousand two hundred and ten, fourteen twenty-five twenty, fourteen thirty thirty, and fourteen thirty one thirty. Those sections can be broadly characterized as either zoning ordinances or land development ordinances. With respect to the zoning ordinances, we're simply saying where our ordinance allows timbering and requires the timbering to be in accordance with best practices, that requirement is only to the extent permitted by the state statute. And with respect to the land development ordinances, we are clarifying and defining in various sections the fact that the land development ordinance will exclude timber harvesting operations as required by the statute. Finally, we make certain amendments to the roads, bridges, right away, and, and right away pulpwood and logging operation ordinance. That ordinance previously required permit and I believe some extensive bonding requirements because timbering often can rip up rural roads quite significantly. However, under this revised new provision, we have a five-thousand-dollar maximum bond that we can impose. And although we can impose some notice requirements when someone's going to timber, we cannot require a permit, as I believe we previously did. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Sam. Can we, if they tear up the road, will we be able to make them come back and fix the road at their expense?
We can.
Beyond the bond amount?
We can. We just can't get that at the front end.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Well, at this time, we're going to open it up for our public hearing. It's approximately seven forty-six. But those that want to speak in favor tonight, we have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time and state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval of Resolution R zero-seven-two-one-two-zero, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance change, adopting ordinance changes to implement state restrictions on local regulation of timber operations.
Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District one.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Thank you. We're going to go back over to item number nine. Discussion, consideration of consecutive water system agreement. Attorney Van Bokenberg, Sam, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I note, I believe that Water Resources Director James Brown is, is in the House, so I may defer to him on some questions as necessary. So you may recall during the rather hectic SDS negotiations last year, we, we were able to put in place a one-year consecutive water system agreement with our city partners, but they did not want to sign that agreement at that time for a longer term. So the primary reason we're entering into this agreement is now to enter into a ten-year SDS-style water system agreement. In most respects, the agreement is very similar to the one that was approved last year. There are a few tweaks to it. Notably, this agreement adopts the sort of water strategic plan that all our water partners have been working on, and it provides that that strategic plan, which will be periodically updated, will sort of serve as the guiding principle for further capital improvements and for distribution of water throughout the county. We also provide that the county will have the ability to expand and improve its current facilities, but to the extent it wants to build a new facility, ala Bear Creek, it will have to consult with the city partners. The city's felt strongly about that, and I think it's fairly reasonable since they're ultimately paying for the water. That's pretty much it. It's a ten-year agreement and we hope to, I guess, revisit this at the next SDS in, in ten years' time.
Thank you, sir. Just want to say thank you to James Brown, Lloyd, the attorneys for working on this. This was extremely difficult to start off with, but things did get better. And so thank you, guys, for all the hard work that you put into this. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Mason?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we consider the consecutive water system agreement IGA with NCWSA and Cities for Water Supply to replace the expiring one-year agreement.
Second.
It's been motioned, it's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District one.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Next is discussion, consideration of amendment to the IGA with the City of Covington for the lease of Williams Street Treatment Facility. Sam, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. One of the major capital elements of our water treatment system is the Williams Street facility, which is in Covington, actually belongs to the city, but we lease it on a long-term lease. The lease is going to expire in February twenty forty-five, which may seem like a long way away, but when we go to spend twenty million dollars improving that plant, we want to make sure that we can maintain a control of it for the life of the time it takes to pay off any bonds we may issue to create that improvement. So Covington has agreed to allow us to extend the long-term lease. So Covington has agreed to allow us to extend the long-term lease of that facility until July 2070, with the potential for another 25 years after that, so that if we put any money into upgrading that facility, we can know that we will have control of it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner? I seek a motion.
Questions? James? Thank you for coming, James, and I know you've been familiar with everything that goes on with the water system. I know we, was it last year or the year before last, we approved a like $25 million bond for the expansion renovation work at the Cornish Creek Plant.
That's correct.
Do we, is, do we still need the Williams Street Plant?
For long-term water use, yes, we will.
Okay. So what's the, is the expected renovation cost of that's going to be?
We're anticipating it's going to be anywhere from $8 to $12 million.
I think in the early 90s, we spent $7 million on it back then. So, but that lasted a long time, so.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's been a while. We had talked about the Williams Street Plant, and I thought, if my memory serves me, you said that we were going to do away with it and we were going to run another, I guess, war line, I guess, straight from Cornish Creek to connect to the City of Covington. And I'll just kind of figure out the rationality for now wanting to kind of just work on that one and take the continued use.
Okay. We met with EPD to go over that scenario. Based off their recommendation and the latest drought that we went through, it would not be, it would not behoove us to do that. And the reason why is that the calculation that we have to do to modify a permit will reduce, I'm sorry, will have to reduce the amount of water that's coming out of the Alcoa River, which in turn will hurt the Cornish Creek Facility with the amount of water we will be able to pull out of that river during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with City of Covington for lease of the Williams Street Water Treatment Facility to extend the term of the agreement as stated by the county attorney.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District 1.
Thank you, sir. It passes 5 to 0. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is a discussion consideration of a T-SLOSS IGA with the Cities of Covington, Mansfield, New Bern, Oxford, Porterdale, and Social Circle. Sam, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, I guess, give Lloyd the opportunity to explain where we are.
Thank you. Commissioners, as you know, over the last several days, there's been a lot of email traffic, and we've been working very hard on, working with the cities to get all of the cities to approve this. We did have one city that did not want to approve the, City of Mansfield did not want to approve the agreement. And so we've been working very hard to try to see if there was some kind of a solution that we could come up with. And at one point, we thought we did have a solution, and then last night, they had a special call meeting, and unfortunately, they did not approve the IGA. And so today, there were further discussions. I know the chairman talked with City of Covington, and this mayor at Covington talked with several of the other mayors. And we did come up with another solution that the, they have indicated will, will, is suitable for them that they would go ahead and sign the, sign the IGA. The important part here is, is that, as you know, all of the cities being involved with the T-SLOSS and agreeing to sign the, and entering into the IGA with the county would allow us to collect the full 1 cent tax. Without that, we would only be permitted to collect .75 cents of the 1 penny. That would reduce our total collections by a quarter. And it's easy to see what that math would do. Instead of our projected collection was 56 million, that would drop our projected collection for the entire county, including the cities down into the $42 million range. So it would significantly impact everyone. In addition to that, the distribution for the cities and the county would not be determined by population, which is what we had agreed to. But it would be determined by a calculation that is done by the Department of Audits. And essentially, what they look at is the previous three years of transportation expenditures by the individual cities and by the county. And it's, they use a formula dividing that by the total, and then you come out with your percentage of the distribution, which in all cases, I think, but one, reduced the distribution by a considerable amount. So, excuse me. So it was really important that we try to get everybody on board because for the benefit of the county and for the benefit of everyone. This is an important piece of work that we've been working on. We do, we all know that there are significant transportation needs within the county, and so we've done quite a bit and put quite a bit of effort in, into this. And so the resolution that Mansfield has suggested and that I would, that I was intending to recommend to you all tonight, they have requested that their total distribution be increased from, I believe there, it was 363 to $800,000. That increase in the distribution would come from the county's proceeds. While I have some reservations about that, I did not want to sacrifice the $40 million that we would receive in the T-SLOSS collections for the $450,000 or so that we would need to increase our, to help fund the Mansfield's needs. Overall, I think it would be a detriment to the total county if we did, if we didn't do that. So I was prepared to make that recommendation to you all. However, in discussing what has been happening, Sam has been doing the yeoman's effort on this. I think he's changed the IGA's three times now because of the changes that have been going with the last five days or so, that the changes that have been going on with this whole process. And so because of all of these changes now, and because we feel, and I've talked to each of you individually and know where you are individually. But because of all of these changes, I believe, and under Sam's guidance here, we need to delay this matter until we can get all of the information back from the cities. We need to send them a clean copy of the IGA with the new distribution rates, yes, with the new distribution percentages, based on the IGA being signed by all parties. And we would need to have a special call meeting, and I would recommend that we try to do that in, on Thursday of this week. And that's very quick. But what we would need to do is to get that document then approved by you all so that we can circulate that one to all the cities so that they have in their hands what the actual percentage of distribution is and what the dollars are that they're, that they would have to work with. So that they need to make any, if they desire to make any changes in their projects that they had initially given to us, then they have the opportunity to do that and so that they can see for themselves what those changes are, what we are doing in regards to the city of Mansfield. Also, don't, I don't want to forget this. Also, I was also, also did advise you that the City of Social Circle had asked for a small additional amount to cover the expenses of the road. They have some roads inside of the area, the incorporated area that's inside of Newton County. I agreed with that because I felt like they were going to receive a very small amount, and I believe that the cost, the amount that they requested was only and would only cover the cost of the maintenance of that road over the course of five years. And I believe I had spoken to all of you and sent you some email regarding that. So with those two things in consideration at this point, what we would need to do would be to gather that information. And I think at this point, we really need to schedule that call meeting and so that we can have the vote on that and we have a clean copy to give all of the cities so then they can schedule theirs because we are in a serious time crunch here. We have to get it to the board. We, the Board of Elections has got to have a call meeting on the 30th, which is next week, in order to meet the deadline to issue the call for the, I guess we're issuing the call for the referendum, or we're doing the passing of the resolution for the call for the referendum. But in order to meet all of the deadlines, they have to meet on the 30th of next week, the 30th or 31st. So we're in a very tight timeline here, so. I hope that explained it to you all. If you've got questions or if I further confused the matter. This has been quite the roller coaster for me and Sam as we've worked our way through it.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Lloyd, what you're saying is that where you talked to Mansfield, and they should agree with everybody, hopefully everybody else. And we should have a call meeting Thursday.
The cities have given, as I understand it, they don't get in the second hand. The cities have given a verbal agreement that they don't, that they don't have an objection to our giving, to our giving Mansfield additional funding. My concern initially was that the other cities would request additional funding, and it would create quite a problem for us because then our funding would be reduced significantly, and we would, you know, could have been reduced by several million dollars. But as it stands right now, the other cities have said that they're not, that they don't have an objection that they are satisfied, or I assume then that they are satisfied with what their distribution would be.
Thank you. So you, any more questions? So you want to table this until Thursday meeting?
Well, I think what we need to do is, is to schedule, yes, table until we, but schedule, a called meeting, yes. I think that's paramount that we do that.
So I seek a motion that we table this until Thursday, a special call meeting at 6 o'clock. It's been motioned, I'm sorry. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Henderson that we table this until our special call meeting, which will be Thursday at 6 o'clock. Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District 1.
Thank you. It's tabled until Thursday meeting at 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number 12, county, I mean, a discussion and consideration of resolution authorizing a T-SLOSS referendum on November 3, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution goes hand in hand with the IGA. For the reasons we just discussed, I would request a motion to postpone consideration of this until the special call meeting at Thursday at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. I seek a motion that we table this until, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve as stated by the county attorney.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Schultz that we table this until Thursday, special call meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
Aye from District 1.
Thank you. That's, it passes 5 to 0. Next is item number 13, Fire Services Purchasing Requested Approval for Amendment 1, Construction Phase of Fire Station Number 2. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to do at this point is ask Jeff Prine, who's our project manager, Mr. Prine, if you'd come up this amendment, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as part of our, we put out an RFP for design-built services for both stations, Fire Station Number 4 and Number 2. Number 2 is a renovation of the existing station to make it habitable for the fire services themselves. So what we've done, we've worked with Kevin Price Construction and their design team to come up with the minimum amount of work that was necessary to basically develop bunk rooms, restrooms, shower areas, and then to renovate the apparatus bays with new lighting, new painting, and fix some of the areas like the air conditioning systems and stuff like that. And so this amendment for $243,058 is the construction end of the GMP associated with that work. And we're coming to you tonight to ask for your authority to enter into that agreement with them, to amend the current agreement with them, and move forward into construction.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this might be come from, this might be come from what, General Fund or what other portion of the base?
Actually, there's a budget transfer a little further down on the agenda, and this is actually coming from the 209 fund, I believe it is, which is, 209, is that right, Mike? 271? It's coming with, from within side of our budget. It's, I'm sorry, I'll let, we're explaining, thank you.
It's originally in the General Fund budget in FY '20, but we were not able to encumber the money in time since we're just now approving the contract. So there's going to be a budget amendment a little bit further down the agenda to ask to move the funds from the General Fund to capital improvement. But there's 243, 475 still available in the FY '20 budget for this.
Thank you. Any more questions? I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval of Amendment 1, Construction Phase of Fire Station Number 2 with Kevin Price in the amount of $243,058.
$243,000.
Yeah, $243,000. You want to restate that for $243,058?
240, 243, I'll say it again. Move for approval for Amendment 1, Construction Phase of Fire Station Number 2 with Kevin Price in the amount of $243,058.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District One.
Thank you. It passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Um, next is, um, item number 14, VOC purchasing requesting, requesting approval of change order with.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you will recall, um, TUSA Consulting was contracted by the county to do, um, to do the RFP for the 911 radio system. Part of that contract, um, the contract was to do an assessment and evaluation of all of our needs, uh, to assess our current system, um, to interview all of the users, uh, and then to prepare an RFP, um, with all of the technical data and so forth that was necessary in order to spec out, um, what we needed and also what we wanted in terms of a 911 system. And then to help us, to work with us through the procurement cross, uh, process and to assist with the negotiations, um, with the, um, uh, to do the interview process with the vendors and then to assist in the negotiations with the contract. There was also a certain part of that contract, um, that there were some services that were going to be provided, um, during a, a limited, uh, implementation of, uh, services that were going to be, excuse me, provided. So, once we got into the process and once that we had gone through the process of doing the procurement, the RFP, the, the procurement, the negotiations and so forth, we determined that it was going to take longer than what it had originally anticipated and that this was a far more technical project, um, than what was anticipated. And we also determined that we needed the assistance of TUSA Consulting beyond what we had originally contracted for. So we began negotiating and, and had discussions with TUSA about, uh, additional, um, assistance and, um, uh, and so we, um, uh, discussed continuing the, or amending the contract and, uh, uh, to add some additional services, um, and to carry this out for an additional 18 months. Now, the simplest, the way this is written up is, is a little confusing in your packet and I apologize for that. So what I did was put it on this slide here and you'll see this is, is, this was about the simplest way that I could e- explain it, uh, to you. Our original contract with TUSA was $213,107. To date, we have paid them $106,686. Uh, as I mentioned, we entered negotiations to modify. Um, we did add some things, some things were actually, um, uh, we found, were taken away. Some things were expanded. And then, so the result was is that they would be overseeing, monitoring, um, and, um, working with us during the entire 18-month implementation, uh, phase and the testing phase of our 911 system. The total for the new contract to cover all of those things and to cover, and the, the first part of the, of the contract would have been was, and for the work already done was four forty, four seventy eight. So if the, you, the four forty, four seventy eight minus the 106 that we've already paid gives you the total change, which is three thirty three, seven ninety two. Like I said, I know it's a little confusing, not a little, it's a lot confusing in the way we have it worded inside of your packet and I, and again, I apologize for that, but I think this is the, um, this was a simplification of that to explain to you how we got, uh, how we arrived at that number. So, does that help clear that up? I know I've talked to a couple of you who've had some question and so.
Commissioner Schultz?
So Lloyd, I don't understand why you don't just, and maybe, maybe I just don't, um, understand contracts, but we approved the original contract in the amount of two thirteen, one oh seven, seventy seven. Why don't we just make the change order for the difference, which would be two hundred and twenty seven thousand, three hundred and seventy and thirty one cents? As opposed to the three thirty three, seventy nine? Because aren't we making a change order to the original contract price? I know it's nitpicking, but I mean, it, isn't that what we're doing is we're changing the original contract price, contract price?
So the, the, well. But the, I guess it would be the ori.
Man, I don't know, does it matter? But it just seems to me that.
I think I'm misunderstanding.
You're making a change to the original contract.
Yeah, maybe Sam, I'm not quite following.
So. To a certain extent, it's just saying one thing a different way, but I think the reason we phrase it as a $333,000 change order is because that reflects all the, all the work that is in the scope of work that we're now including. So we're, we're not adding, uh, we're not, we're not asking them to perform a scope of work that is worth $200,000. We're asking them to perform a scope of work that's worth $300,000. And at the same time, we're deleting $100,000 worth of different work.
Okay, I understand your rationale, I'm just, just making sure that, okay.
Anyone else? Any more questions? I seek a motion, please?
So, since I, I just, I, I, whenever I've done change orders, it's always been off the original contract, that's why I'm still confused. But, but your, your explanation, so, I move for approval to accept the change order with TUSA in the amount of $333,007, $333,792 for implementation.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District One.
Thank you. It passes five to zero, thank you. Uh, next on the, on the agenda is item number 15, requesting approval of maintenance agreement with ESRI Inc. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a maintenance agreement that we have, and this is split actually three ways between the county, the city and the, um, Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. Tim Lawrence is here tonight also to answer any of the technical questions about this. The county actually owns, holds the license, I believe, for this and that's why we usually pay the bill, but, uh, Tim, if you would.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, tonight, the GIS department brings before you the annual three-year renewal of our enterprise license agreement with Esri, since we have held, since I believe since 2008. Uh, we've been a customer of Esri's, as has the city and the water authority since 1999. And the cost of this three-year term has remained steady since, I believe, 2008 at $50,000 per year. For the county's portion, it's 150,000 for the three-year term. Excuse me, the county's portion is 40% of the 50,000. But based on population increase, uh, the cost is going up from 150,000 to 210, um, which will by the third year be $75,000 per year, um, shared equally amongst the three agencies. And, um, we request your approval.
Thank you, sir. You guys, any questions? Mr. Lawrence? Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim, you mentioned there's three agencies. What three agencies are you referring to? Cause I don't know if I had.
City of Covington.
Okay.
And the Newton County Water and Sewerage Authority.
Okay.
And in addition to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioners, I seek a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the maintenance agreement with Esri in the amount of $210,000 for GIS software applications and support for three years.
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
Aye from District One.
Thank you. It passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
County attorney, consideration agreement for the sale of realty, uh, between Miss Peggy Jean Knox, Ms. Megan Martin.
Chairman and commissioners, before you tonight, I have great news. Uh, we have a contract in place, hopefully that you will approve for Fire Station Four. So, uh, we've worked really hard on getting that taken care of and we have reached, um, an agreement with the Peggy Jean Knox Residual Trust, um, that we are going to purchase lands located at 465 Big Woods Road, Covington, Georgia. And that is going to be purchased for $65,000.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I seek a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to the agreement for sale of realty between Peggy Jean Knox Residual Trust and Newton County Water Commissioners for land acquisition of Fire Station Four and other stipulations that stated by the county attorney.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District One.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is discussion and considerations of CARES Act. Mr. Lloyd Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I included in your, or included in your packet is a, is a memo discussing and outlining what I'm proposing. Our total distribution for the, um, from the CARES Act is $4,841,480. I'm recommending that, um, Newton County, we retain $1,302,059 and one cent, um, to, for reimbursement of our expenses between March and December 31st of this year. The remainder, um, I wanted to split in, I'm recommending that we split into two, uh, areas. One is small business grants and the other is for community grants to organizations, families and individuals. Each of those areas would receive $1,769,710.50. The small business grants, I'm going to be working with the Debbie Harper in the chamber. We are meeting tomorrow to begin, uh, looking at the formation of a committee, uh, to, um, review applications and to begin that process also to do, uh, begin working on some of the logistical things that need to be done, which I've actually, uh, a few of those things I've listed on the second page. For instance, developing the processes, documentation requirements, uh, coming up with selection criteria, individual award, award amounts and so on. And that's for both the small business grants and for the community grants. On the community grant side, um, I've had, um, uh, been working with Laura Bertram at the Family Connections, uh, Newton County Partnerships and, uh, a meeting again, um, on Thursday with her and members of the, um, community groups. And we've already formed a committee that will be putting together the selection criteria and working on applications and so forth. Uh, so we're moving ahead pretty, fairly, pardon me, already fairly quickly on that side to, to be prepared to, um, begin, uh, awarding these grants just as soon as we, as soon as we get the, uh, the money. A couple of the things though, that I did want you to consider, um, what I would like out of this, uh, tonight was one for an approval of the recommended budget or a substitute budget, whatever the board, um, would believe is appropriate. But also, I've also made some recommendations for some of the criteria. On the small business grant side, that the businesses would be located, uh, in unincorporated Newton County, and these are for the businesses we would serve, that a minimum of 60% of the small business grants would be spent on payroll and payroll related expenses. And by that, I mean hiring employees, um, and it also could be things like purchasing uniforms, uh, buying equipment, um, personal protective gear, things like that. The idea there is to get as many people employed as we possibly can. And then, and someone could spend 100% of whatever grant they may receive on, uh, uh, putting people on the payroll. So there's not a limit there as far as, uh, over, but at least a minimum of 60% of that grant. Up to 40% of the small business grants could be spent on other COVID-19 related expenses. And these were the things that I had mentioned in the past, um, cleaning supplies, um, alterations to buildings, uh, things like, things of that nature, other, you know, marketing, buying merchandise, um, you know, incre, you know, replenishing stock, things like that, all of those other eligible expenses. That they must have a Newton County business license and have been in business since March 1 of 2019. They must be for profit, um, and that they, maximum number of employees would be 100. And again, these are all recommendations and those are for your consideration. If, if, obviously if you think that's too large or not large enough, whatever, um, those. And then the other recommendation for community grants is simply that the grants would be open to all organizations and citizens within Newton County. The need for individuals and families is spread throughout the entire county. A lot of the organizations that we have reside within a lot of the incorporated areas. And so, um, I, I think, uh, it would be appropriate to, for, for all of those organizations to be considered. But since the cities do or will be receiving their own allotment from the state, um, I think it would be, um, uh, that it is appropriate that we, that we restrict our funding for small business to those located in the unincorporated areas.
Thank you, sir. Guys, any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Oh, one of the things that, that I heard you say was that the, um, that we just restrict to unincorporated Newton County. And I would, I would think that it, it would be for anybody, anywhere in the county except that, except that the grant say if you're going to give a PPP loan, payroll protection, that it couldn't be duplicated. Or the city couldn't give me a PPP loan, you know, use me for an example. And then I go back and apply for the county, it should be just one loan rather than two. I don't, you know, and I didn't mention, I, I didn't hear anything about the 501(c)(3) in the, in the, and that, so how would they fit in here?
The, we're not going to be, uh, doing any, um, any of the payroll, any of those PPP loans. What we're, um, uh, there are some agencies that are doing that. But, um, well, my recommendation is not to do the loans, is simply to do the grants. But the, um, but the money is, is available for 501(c)(3) and that would come under the community grants and those would be the organizations that I was referring to, any of the 501(c)(3). There are, you know, a lot, just like with the businesses, there are certain, the federal government requires certain things and will. the federal government requires certain things and will have to have those, whatever those are. And we're, you know, still, we're still working through what all those requirements are. But most of those requirements are that they're registered and that they have a target population that they serve and so forth, so. But as we work our way through them, the biggest thing and that, and is one of the things that we're discussing now with the group is, um, some very real logistical items, and not the least of which is, uh, what do we do to confirm, verify that the end recipient, um, is receiving aid due to a coronavirus, um, emergency, whatever that is. And that's going to be something that's going to be kind of hard to do. But, uh, there are ways in which we can do that. But any expenditures that are, or any monies that are expended out utilizing these funds have to be related to COVID-19 in one way or another. Um, and so that's part of what we're doing right now is figuring, is really we're trying not to reinvent the wheel, utilizing what a lot of other counties are doing. Um, they're looking at other cities and all to see what they've done so far and trying to use them as a model. Um, but also, so the eligibility, determining eligibility, you know, I'm sure we're going to run into a few bumps. Um, and, um, but, um, but we'll try to get as much of this and help as many people as possible that are eligible.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there going to be any tiering of the award? Or is it all, I mean, how are you going to determine? Is everybody going to get the same amount of award?
Well, that's part of what, um, the committees would determine as to what that, um, ceiling would be, if there will be a floor and if there would be a ceiling. Um, some of the discussion has been that, um, that the, um, 501 organizations, because, um, there's not quite as many of those as there are in, like I said, the number of businesses. Maybe the award amounts might be a little bit larger. But that's kind of to be determined at, at this point. And I, I think that's, we're trying to get a group of subject matter experts. That's why I, I went to the chamber to help utilize the people that they used on their committee. And then went to people, uh, to Laura because she has, Laura Bertram has got the contacts. We've already pretty much engaged, um, with Salvation Army has got a tremendous, um, database for, and the ability to serve families and individuals. Um, and they already have experience working, um, with, uh, COVID, uh, some of the CARES Act money because of their work in Atlanta and in Fulton County and some of the other counties. So they're aware of some of the restrictions and, 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 and all. Um, and they do quite a bit of work in the county and do quite a bit of referrals. But we have, the people who volunteered so far on, for that committee were, um, people from Salvation Army, um, some DFAX, um, the, um, I'm drawing a blank. Um, uh, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank here, but I don't know all the people personally. But they're individuals who have worked, um, Solid Rock Church volunteered. Um, they've got a food, a big food pantry, I believe. There's a woman by the name of Helen Johnson. I don't know if you know who she is. She does quite a bit of work in DeKalb County, um, and, um, but, but a pretty well-rounded group of people who have the experience that we need. And part of their job is going to be help, to help set up the application processes. She's got access to some databases that we could use to help, or, or some software that would help build a database to do that. But, but those are all some of the things that have got to be done. And like I said, we're not going to try to reinvent the wheel. We're going to look at what other people have done and tailor it to the amount of dollars that, that we have.
So one request that I would have, because some of the, um, some of the different grants have prohibited people that had, um, self, uh, had 1099 employees. In other words, like some of your, um, salons, they're employee, the, the people that work for them are not technically employees. They rent space for them, but a lot of the previous grants prohibited them from having.
Yeah, and all of those people would be eligible to apply. Um, you know, and then it would be the committee's decision on what and how much. And, and it also would be, you know, there'll be an application process. So they would need to, um, they'll have to complete an application and essentially, in some kind of written format, uh, explain what it is they're asking and, you know, what they're going to use the, use it for, why they need it. So, and then the applications would be graded or rated based on, you know, based on those things. I don't know whether there would be an interview. I don't know whether there would be time to do that, but, um, but the awards, based on what other, uh, communities have done, um, there's an application process, there's a screening by a committee of people. The awards are, uh, then they make a recommendation for the awards. Uh, I believe that the actual, um, there'll be a list developed. And I think that the board would actually have to approve that list. Not that you would necessarily go through and say, no, I don't think this guy needs it or that. You would have to approve it because the money comes from the state to the county and the county sending it out. Uh, so you have to be in there, it's just, basically you just have to give tacit approval. But, um, but then, um, so there would be, you know, so you would kind of be in the loop on, on, on some of that.
I have one last question. So the Facebook grant prohibited any, I mean, any, uh, people that were affiliated with county government or city government.
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Will there be a provision that says that no one that's in county government or city, uh, or city government can be, uh, can be.
There can be if that's, you know, something.
I'm just asking because that's what the Facebook grant.
I mean, they're, they're.
Let me ask a quick question. When you say affiliated with county or city, you're talking about elected officials?
Um, that when I read the Facebook grant, because I looked at applying for that for my business and it said that if you are, if you are employed or if you receive any kind of compensation from county or city government, you may not apply for this money.
Well. I don't. Part of the, well, part of the application process has, uh, do you have other sources of income? What are your other sources of income? So, for instance, if we had a, um, an employee that works here but also runs their own small business, they would, you know, need to report that they have other sources of income. You know, the, uh, um, so, and I, and I think that would exclude somebody, uh, from, um, or may exclude somebody, at least. But there are those people who work here and do other things in order to, you know, pay their bills. Yeah. Well, I mean, there are things in there and typically other, other, um, um, the other thing too is, is that other communities have asked for prior year's tax returns and prior year, uh, uh, some of them have asked for audits. I don't know if that's necessary, but prior year tax returns to determine, are you actually a business that's running for profit or are you a business? That's why it's for-profit, you know? Are you a business that is in the, in the business of doing business for the advantage of business? Not necessarily to make a pile of money, but, um, there are other advantages that you may be trying to avail yourself to. Of, um, and so there are, or there is, uh, a lot of documentation that's being requested, particularly of businesses. The individuals, not so much, but because what we're doing is asking documentation, would be asking documentation from the organization that would be distributing food or, or, or for instance, if, um, somebody, you know, one of the things is rent or utility, um, assistance. So if an organization, if we granted an organization $10,000 to do utility assistance, then that organization would have to certify that the utilities that they're paying are for people who have had difficulty because of COVID-19, either layoff or job loss or whatever. Because when we, and then they would verify or certify that so that if some audit ever came out and it showed that Joe Smith really wasn't employed and he just didn't want to pay his bill, then, you know, then, then the replacement of that money would have to come from that organization, so. So there's, there are a lot of checks and things we can put in here. Uh, through it without making it too terribly complicated. But we do have to have certain types of things and there, there's going to be a lot of information we're going to have to ask for. And I know that, you know, unfortunately that may frustrate some people, but, um, but if the money happens to be, if we don't document it, then what will happen is, then the, the state and, and I guess in the federal government too, looks at it as a loan. And then if we haven't sufficiently documented it, they're going to say, well, we just, you didn't document that this was eligible expense, so we're considering this a loan. Now you owe us the money back. So what we want to do is make sure, and that's why we're going to, all the paperwork and stuff is making some of the hoops, is so that we don't have to pay the money back. And we get it to the people that need it and certainly, you know, they'll be, help them as much as we can.
Hey, hey, guys, hey, hey, we, hey. If you can't hear, just let the deputy know, please, because we are in a live meeting. Uh, Laura, could you please speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. But, um, anyway, that, that, there will be a, a fair amount of checks and balances in here to do that.
I got Commissioner Mason in front of me. Laura, I, I, you know, I don't know about the county employees. I understand elected officials, but, um, county employees, that's, that's a little different, but that's okay. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to, um, kind of along the same lines that, uh, Commissioner Schultz was asking about, like your salons and barber shops where there are 1099s, do they individually apply? Or is it just maybe the main person in that salon or barber shop or whatever it may be are the only one that can apply? Or do they, because they're all 1099, do they apply individually?
If they're independent contractors, I believe that the process will be they have to apply individually. And it's all their individual information.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Henderson.
Well, I think, I, I thought I was just about to know what we were talking about. Now I'm a little confused, I'm saying. Um, but I, I guess is there a, a, a person that anyone, once we get going, hopefully more soon than later, a contact person they can talk to or call and say, I'm looking at this specific grant. Give me the information, what, what might I need prior to advance, rather than head and go and maybe sit in front of a desk or talk to Ms. Bertram or whatever, so they know automatically what they may need. And then at that point, they might choose to say that, hey, I might not want to go through all this or I might not be interested. And secondly, is it just for the unincorporated Newton County that we're talking about? The unincorporated, uh, 501(c)(3)'s? And we're not talking about countywide? I, I just, if I may, if I may, uh, completely, I, I just find it hard for us to make a decision and then head for the folks, but we have two thirds, um, two thirds of the people may not be eligible because they're not unincorporated. Thank you.
The 501(c)(3)'s, I, I'm recommending that it be open to the entire county for 501(c)(3)'s. But that's a board decision, um, you know. And, and I would recommend, but I'm also recommending that the small business grants only be open to only those in the unincorporated area. But again, that's, you know, y'all's decision.
Anyone else? Mr. Cowan.
Just a quick question. I guess I'm a little confused with that. I thought this was for, uh, for-profit business, so that would automatically exclude 501(c)(3)'s.
There's, there's actually two, yes, sir, that's correct. There's two, two pots of money.
Correct.
One pot for small business and one pot for 501(c)(3)'s.
So there is, so there is a separate one for the nonprofits?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question would be, uh, is our county auditor going to audit this process? Or is that?
No.
Is there a state auditor going to look at it or?
We can do that.
Or do we have to hire a third-party auditor?
Um, that's part of the informa, uh, that, that's some of the information that I've got to look at, that I have to.
Because that's one of the things that makes me think there's a lot of possibility of problems coming out of it.
Well, yeah.
Anytime you got money and you're handing it out and you're not keeping good records and somebody's not checking it, it just bothers me.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and the finance department is going to have to be involved in this. I've already talked with Brittany about, uh, some of this. But some of the stuff with the, um, I think what we would, I mean, obviously what we're going to have to do is set up separate accounts for, um, this money. Because the money will become from the state in, into the county, so we'd have to have a separate account.
I would think at a minimum, we would talk with our auditing firm and just say, how do we want to handle this? They may want to separate that, separate that with a separate.
Yeah.
Group and maybe a separate contract for that, just so that we know that.
Yeah, I think.
The money's going to be accounted for properly. So, I mean, it's just a suggestion.
Anyone else? So Laura, you, you want, you need a motion of approval to move forward, right, tonight?
Yes, sir, and I would need a motion to approve. To approve the budget and to approve any or all of the recommended, the recommendations that I have on this sheet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we approve the CARES Act fund budget, um, recommended by our county manager.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In that, in that motion and second, is it going to be out the amount of money that this, uh, this being spending to his will?
That, that going to come back before the board?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The money, amount of money that's allotted, um, for the grants and things like that.
I can bring it back to you all. Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And all the commissioners will get the information, so you can put it on your personal, um, social media site if you would like to share with your, with your constituents, so.
Sure.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I will have to abstain. I could not hear the presentation very well, nor the subsequent discussion. So at this time I will abstain. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Pass four one one, um, substantial, yeah. Um, next is item number 18, finance. Requesting for a budget transfer.
Thank you, Chairman. This is just a follow-up to agenda item number 13, as I discussed earlier. So this will be a budget transfer to move $243,475 from the FY '20 fire budget over to the capital improvement funds. over to the capital improvement funds. Does anybody have any additional questions?
Any question, guys? I seek a motion, please.
Make that motion to move the money from the, over to the capital improvement funds. What was it, 240 some thousand, 243,058? Oh, fifty-eight?
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I'm, my apologies, Mr. Chairman. Could I, can we get Brittany to say the exact purpose of this, this transfer one more time? I could barely hear it.
Yeah, not a problem, Commissioner Edwards. This transfer is to move FY20 funds that were budgeted in the fire department to do renovations on Fire Station Two. This is just a transfer to move it over to capital improvement funds because they were not able to, um, seal a contract prior to closing FY20.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Aye from District One.
Thank you. It passes five to zero, thank you. Uh, item number nineteen, uh, finance, resolution, um, R-072120B, a resolution to adopt the FY21 budget. Mr. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, we would like and request that the board adopt the fiscal year 21 budget for the county. I'd like that this time to recognize and thank all of the, uh, staff members who worked so hard on this. Also, I'd like to thank all the board and you, Mr. Chairman, for all your assistance during this process, as well as the, um, all of the elected officials and the constitutional officers who also worked to make this budget happen. The, this budget will, um, is for a total budget for, oops, excuse me. Let me pull this out and I'll give you the total dollars for this budget. The total of all funds is 104 thou-, 104 million, 587,269 dollars. The general fund, uh, bu-, uh, budget is 74 million, 398,136 dollars.
Thank you, sir. My, Commissioner Schultz, if she would make this motion, if she would.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is my last opportunity to pass a budget. And just wanted to say that, um, my first time to vote on a budget was back in 2009. It was about 30 million less than what it is now. So we've come a long way. It's a lot of increases and yet the population has increased. We've come a long way to, um, uh, make our entire county financial operations stronger. And so I'm pleased that we are at this point and that by adopting this budget, we will actually lower, be able to lower the millage rate. So I think we've done a good job, all of us, to get to this point. And so with that, I would move for approval of R-072120B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County to adopt an annual budget for fiscal year 2021, beginning July one and 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021.
It's been motioned by, uh, Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me be clear in my mind, in this tick, this, this particular budget, it, that we're still having a rollback, am I correct in saying that, Lord? Still going to be, there'll be a rollback?
Yes, sir, the rollback rate is 12.917.
So in the rollback, what that means is, is that there still will be a increase. And what I had been told, the reason why we had the increase, because we had more portions of property in the county than we had previously had. I mean, am I thinking on the right line?
There, there will be more taxes collected because of, partially because of the increase in the number of properties that are being, that are coming, that are being developed. But also if a property has increased its value more than 7.29% over last year, then there will be additional taxes collected. Some properties did not increase their value more than that, some increased more, so. But yes, part of it is because of the, um, because of that, and the other part is because of the, uh, reassessments.
So the headline is probably going to read said, county reduces taxes, uh, millage or something, something to that effect. But yet, if you read on a little bit further, he'll tell you that there are, and some of the properties, uh, maybe most of the properties, there still would be a tax increase. And it's, it's my understanding of it is, is the way it is. I mean, if anybody want to chime in and cor-, correct me or stray me, please do.
I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part.
Okay, I repeated again, what I said was, that the paper will read, the county, uh, there's reduction, uh, in, no reduction in county taxes, county taxes will be the same. But when they've, some of the people or most of the people or few of the people receive their bill, there will be an increase. And even though it said there will be no increase, it's rollback, you still, there will still be some increase in, in people property taxes.
Well, there's, there's not, um, we're not saying there's not going to be an increase. I'm not, we've not said that. We said there would be a rollback, and this is the technical definition of a rollback that is proffered by the revenue department. So it doesn't mean there's not going to be an increase in, in taxes. It, it depends on how much the increase in the value of the property was. You know, their, their taxes may go up. It could be, um, because the value of their property increased by 15%. And that is greater than the increase in the digest. So if it increases more than that, then they would be paying more taxes. But if it increases less than the digest, which was seven, a little over 7%,
Yes, and I, I just, yes, it is. When in 2019, there was a tax increase when we, uh, uh, supported and voted for the budget, which I abstained, and as I said, prior to Chairman Baines, he, uh, broke the tie and, and voted for it. In 2018, there was a rollback. It was a tax increase in which.
Since I've been on this board, I've not adopted.
You, you wasn't on that then?
2018.
Yeah, well, well, maybe 2017, but you wasn't on the board.
Come on in 2017.
Okay.
We've not adopted.
Hey, guys, hey, 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 guys.
It's a, it's not a debate, uh, I proceed as a tax increase or rollback.
I think, I think Commissioner Henderson, I don't think he's, he's saying there was a tax, uh, there was a, a decrease in our millage rate, and there was a decrease in our millage rate. That's what he's pretty much saying, though.
Yes, there is a decrease in the millage rate. Okay? And, but it does meet the technical definition of a roll, of a rollback. But it does not mean that we're collecting the same amount of taxes. We are collecting more taxes than we did the previous year. Some people will not have a tax increase, some people will, some will have a decrease, some will not have an increase, some will have a decrease. Yes. Now I'm getting myself confused, sorry. But yes, we did have, we did reduce it.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Mason, hang on a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I just want to get clarification. Now, say for example, we didn't have this rollback in place and we went ahead and, um, approved this budget to be at, what was it last year, 13.4, I think it was, or something like that? So say for example, if we were still the same, um, that would still be applicable, meaning that there would still be some, uh, citizens would pay more taxes if their, um, if their house value increased, which would cause them, but those that their house value didn't increase, it wouldn't increase their taxes. Would, would that be the same depending on, no matter what the millage rate is, right?
That is true, but it would not be a rollback. Or yes, that, that is true, but it would not be a rollback. If we maintain the same millage rate, um, and there are occasions and there are reasons why people's property tax or the valuation on the property would decrease, and so, and they may pay less taxes. But there are those people with, that would pay more. There's some people that might pay the same thing depending on the situation. My taxes were reduced, I paid less taxes in 2019 than I did in 18, simply because I put, uh, the major portion of my property into a coup, a conservation use valuation, because I own 19 acres of woods. So, so I did reduce the cost for me. But, and that's, a lot of people do that, you know, but, but the year before, I didn't have that, so I, everything was, so it was more. So I saved a couple of hundred dollars that way, but, but, um, but the valuation will come back, so.
And, and I think that's kind of to your point. I, I think that's, you know, last year being my first budget that I was able to approve, and even this year, I kind of wanted this board to kind of get away from focusing on the millage rate. Because when you focus on the millage rate, it causes a lot of confusion. Let's just focus on what does it take to run the county? Uh, because I think that's what this board, that's our job, that's our objective, is to say, how much money is it going to actually cost for us to run this county versus trying to manipulate numbers or figure out how we're actually going to reach a specific millage rate? Because when we do that, it causes a lot of confusion because it's a possibility that even though we decrease a millage rate, you can, certain citizens can still have an increase in their property taxes. So I think if this board begins to focus on what does it cost us to run this county versus, well, let's try to figure out what the millage rate is, then I think that will keep down a lot of confusion. It, maybe I'm wrong, or maybe I'm right, I don't know. But I think if we just stop focusing on the millage rate and focus on what is it going to cost this, you know, cost us to run this county and allow the digest to come in and let the digest dictate what that millage rate is going to be, I think we'll be in a better position versus trying to figure out, are we cutting taxes? Are we increasing taxes? Kind of let the digest do that on its own. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schultz.
So, we're voting on a budget tonight, we're not voting on a millage rate. So if you look at the budget that we're voting on and you look at the general fund amount, we're voting on somewhere around three million dollars extra than what we had voted on last year. So we voted on, we're voting on about a three million dollar increase. But of that three million dollar increase, we have two brand-new fire stations plus a renovated fire station that we have to staff. We have seventy, uh, sixty-nine new positions that we're funding. We have additional services, we have animal services that we are, that we're staffing. We have senior services that we're staffing. So we're providing additional services. We don't want to build those facilities and not have anybody to staff them. So at least at this point tonight, that three-ish million dollars is something that is necessary to be able to provide the services that the county expects.
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner, um, thank you, Commissioner, um, Henderson.
Well, thank you, this is my final, last comment, uh, probably on this. We have a surplus of 19, 20 million dollars, and that shouldn't be nobody, nobody in Newton County should have any kind of tax increase of any sorts. We are in a pandemic where people are struggling just to pay the light bill, struggling to put food on their tables. They're struggling. And here we are saying, well, you know, you just, we, this money we saving is for emergency. Well, when you find out the true numbers of people who died here in the COVID, the true numbers of the people who are infected with this virus that we fight so much on, then we shouldn't be putting anything on anybody. We should be up here figuring out how to give our first responders, how to pay. See, the COVID, and they gave their, and yet we haven't even mentioned it. And we should put our first responders on the front line, pay them for the, the work that they're doing and the obstacles that they are facing. So it's, whoa, it's just a, it's a rollback. It's not just a rollback, this is a town where you should be trying to help your citizens, uplift them, make sure they have food on their tables whenever possible, if you had to buy it and do like we, what we used to do, give it to all the community centers and distribute, or give it to the communit-, uh, the commissioner to distribute it, and yet we're not. So no, I mean, I just don't agree with any source of raise to anybody in this day and time. And I'm sorry, y'all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, I'll rehash what, what I said in our, our, earlier, our budget hearing meetings and hours, is, uh, this, this budget rep, does not represent what I had originally wanted. But I will say, a, a, along the way, I had submitted two, three different, um, versions of a budget, specifically scaled down quite a bit. Now, I, I knew the first one would not get any traction, but, but I had other commissioners, uh, help on the next couple, and, and we had Lloyd and Brittany that worked with us. We had our department heads and our constitutional officers work with us, and we got it to, like I said, I'll repeat, not where I want it, but it's better than the proposed. It's a far cry from the proposed, and I believe it represents a budget that will, um, that will serve the purposes of the county and, and provide services for the citizens of the county. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this budget. Uh, I believe it's, it represents a, quite a compromise and it represents, or it, it provides the funds to ride county like it should be. Uh, and, and Nancy, Ms. Schultz has already touched on the additional services, the animal, animal control desperately needed. Uh, we've been, we've increased our senior services, and we even had some, uh, constitutional officers and, uh, department heads that pulled back original headcount requests so as to get this budget passed. For that reason, I will be voting for this budget tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
That's an aye from District One.
Thank you. All opposed? Thank you, sir. It passes four one. Next is item number twenty, um, finance, um, R-072120C, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving fiscal year 2021 appropriations to entities confer, conferring substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County. Mr. Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to read the, uh, proclamation. Uh, whereas the Constitution of the United States of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November of 1982 and effective July one, 1983, provides in Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas Newton County, like all other county and municipal governments in Georgia, is limited by the state constitution and the Georgia Code in how public funds can be used, one of the principal restrictions is the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution. And whereas there is no gratuity or violation of the gratuities clause when Newton County receives a countywide substantial benefit in exchange for a budget appropriation. substantial benefit in exchange for a budget appropriation, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the substantial benefit of working with community partners in the worthy causes they pursue that are highly beneficial to the citizens of Newton County, and whereas the following entities appeared before the Newton County Board of Commissioners to seek budget appropriations for fiscal year twenty, uh, two, uh, excuse me, two thousand twenty-one, Macintosh Trail ECD Council, Inc., Newton County Recreation Commission, Newton County, pardon me, Newton County Community Partnership, Newton Nelson Heights Community Center, Newton County Board of Health, Washington Street Community Center, Newton County Library System, Viewpoint Health, Newton County IDA, Newton County DFAX, Alcove Casa, Inc., Highway two seventy-eight CID. Whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the aforementioned entities confer countywide substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners wishes to provide appropriations to the aforementioned entities as part of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia as follows. The Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the following entities' services confer, confer a substantial benefit to the Newton County citizens. Macintosh Trail, New, ECD Council, Inc., Newton County Rec. Commission, Newton County Community Partnership, Nelson Heights Community Center, Newton County Board of Health, Washington Street Community Center, Newton County Library System, Viewpoint Health, Newton County IDA, Newton County DFAX, Alcove Casa, Highway two seventy-eight CID. The Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves budget appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to the aforementioned entities, providing community-wide services to the citizens of Newton County, so resolved this twenty-first day of July twenty twenty, Newton County Board of Commissioners, Marcelo Baines. Chairman attests Jackie Smith, County Clerk.
Thank you, sir. I take a motion, please. Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Can I ask a question first? I go, you only make a motion when you're in Congress.
I would love you to make a motion, please.
Uh, the move for proposal of resolution R zero seven two one, two zero three, please. As read by, uh, County Commissioner Turner, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving fiscal year twenty twenty-one appropriations to entities confer substantial benefits to the citizens of Newton County.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Schultz.
So, um, Lloyd, my question is about, is the rec. commission is included in this? Now, the rec. commission doesn't, they don't actually become a part of Newton County government until August? So are they included? No, they were, they were included on the first of July, right? So why do we include them in here? Do we need to include them from here? Because they're not technically, what their budget is not technically rolled into the other budget, into the, you know, my budget.
Right. We've got to, we have to include them in the budget. I, I'm assuming it was kept in here because they appeared before the board when they were still not part, that they were still in appropriation. And they now tip, now that the budget is adopted, it's been since then, but, um, they, they can be taken out. I mean, I, I don't have any objection to taking them out. When you take them out, let's take them out, but.
So I guess my question is, if you remove them, that, what was the amount that they got?
One.
I can't remember exactly, I can't pull it, but, um. So has that been rolled, has that amount been rolled into the budget?
Brittany, can you come up and answer that question?
Their amount's still in the appropriation part of the budget because we just haven't had time to work out the logistics of everything. Next week, a meeting with the Recreation Finance, um, employee to work on dispersing everything. So once we get there, I'll bring another budget amendment to the board to allocate them out to their own department.
I, I, I suggest that we give them opportunity to completely make that transition, and then they can come back before the board.
So, so we, we still approve this with them in here?
We left it in there for that reason, just because we haven't been able to work out all the logistics yet.
Okay. I mean, I, I have no problem.
I know, I, we debated back and forth too, and we just decided to keep it in there.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson.
So, let me try to understand this. So, we've, we've already rolled over the entire staff under the DOC Board of Commissioners. So, are we still need of everybody that, that you roll over? Cause it was a self-functioning, uh, I guess, uh, recreation, and then it, then it, that it is a department.
Yeah, that's correct.
Are we still needing every, everybody? Are we gonna keep everybody? Or how's it gonna work? Or have we spoke with the, uh, employees and?
That's, that's part of what we're working on right now. I mean, um, we did meet today, uh, with, um, Tenard and John Anglin to talk about some of the, anything that was outstanding and, um, you know, the transition, we, and part of that transition is with the finances and all. As far as I know, um, all of the employees, uh, we really haven't talked about employees, but, um, I, I don't know that there would be any reason not to keep them, but, you know, we really have, uh, I think they had reorganized to where they would be able to utilize all of their employees, so I don't really see that changing at this point.
Okay. So they would, they would report to?
Yeah, they would report to me, yeah. That's right, yeah.
Anyone else? I'll, uh, Commissioner Schultz, I'm, Commissioner Schultz.
So, so Brittany, when, um, I think it'll be really helpful that when all the transition takes place and you bring that budget amendment, you bring exactly the, the new structure of the department to us and exactly how many people are going to be employed and what the scope of their work will be.
Anyone else? All in favor? Commissioner Edwards?
Eye from District One.
Thank you. Passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Uh, next is citizens comments. It's an opportunity, we let citizens come up and make comments about, um, any topic they so chooses. Um, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Um, you may come at this time. We want to make sure, um, you may come at this time. Want to make, I want to make sure, um, I'm sorry, you can come up to the podium, please. If you like, you can. Um, want to make sure that we remind everybody that this is a, um, a still a business meeting, and please make sure your comments are appropriate. Uh, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
First of all, I make a comment. I just want to say I appreciate the two and a half hours you spent. My wife sent me a text, said my pork chop is cold, and probably yours as well. I'll be brief and to the point.
Can you state your name, your address for the record, please?
Yes. I'm Bob Happner. Lynn and I live at five-two-zero-one Newton Drive, three-zero-zero-one-four in the Honorable Ronnie Cowans District. That's ten blocks in that direction from where I'm standing right now. First of all, I want to applaud the county commissioners for the, for discussing a hard and painful community issue last Tuesday night. And I also want to thank Megan Martin for guiding the BOC away from legal trouble. For weeks, we've witnessed the painful matter unfold. We've seen rallies, and we've seen protests, we've heard, uh, news coverage, social media discussions, comments, chatter, rants. We even made the New York Times. So, by chance, did you, Chairman Baines, or any of the commissioners, see the graffiti on the wall of the corner of Williams Street Northeast and Haven Drive Northeast painted sometime late Saturday night or early Sunday morning on the weekend of June seventh, sixth, and seventh? Did any of you see it? Okay. I made, if you didn't, I made some pictures. And the pictures were of obscene, terroristic, symbolic graffiti of the militant, violent, anti-right wing group Antifa. Yesterday, Alice Cohen, well, that alarms me. Yesterday, Alice Cohen wrote, um, in The Citizen, "The Board of Commissioners' vote last week to remove the statue was based on a motion to protect the monument after Chairman Marcelo Baines said he had received threats to destroy and to deface." Well, Chairman Baines, I'm alarmed by that. And I'm disturbed that you personally received email threats. I think that's a crime. So here's my public comment. I'm alarmed at pictures of terroristic Antifa graffiti on private property eight blocks from where I live. I'm alarmed that you, Chairman Baines, and others received harassing email threats about violence. And most of all, I'm alarmed that the BOC made, did a vote based on a motion to protect property from threats of destruction of or defacing. So, that's my comments. That's what I'm alarmed about, and that's what disturbs me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I have something I wanted to read, but my wife told me not to. Um, I just want to thank you guys for making a decision.
Please state your name, your address for the record.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Gene Wills, one-twenty-five Homestead Way, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-four. Uh, I just want to thank the commissioners for making a hard decision and a scary one. I know what it feels like to be on the receiving end on some threats or, or different things. But I never been around a people who make these threats. I mean, to, from what I understand, and from what I'm hearing, people who've been around these people make the type of threats that they coming after you are more scared for you than you think you should be. I'm not worried about anyone coming over my house or anything like that. I've been threatened from people up in northern Georgia and different places. And I'm confused because this issue is not about one person. This issue is about American history and the truth about it. And we have people doing things such as spray painting on walls who are really for keeping a statue, but they want to set fear like Antifa is in Covington, Georgia. Uh, I have a hard time believing that. I really believe that people are playing games. People have been arrested for infiltrating Black Lives Matters and causing riots and looting and things of that nature. So, until the people are caught doing these things, I don't think Antifa's here. And the people who have history of making these type of threats and carrying them out, they're still here. Their kids are here. And they are the ones who went in people's doors and dragged them out the house and harmed them. They are the ones who said that black people are not human. They're the ones who wanted segregation. So far as the history as I understand it, I never been around people who plan to hurt people. But I know the people who know people who plan and have really hurt people know what they're capable of. So, I like this, uh, we're moving forward, one Newton. And, um, I have nothing against any one person, a per, on a personal level. It's, I just want the truth out there, not your heritage, the myth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Thomas Button, six feet to flee the drive. Question I got is, who's paying for this thing? I mean, her says, oh, brother, county's broke. Where you gonna get the money? Where you gonna get the money paid for this thing? Nobody got no. Well, I'm glad we got two people that for the people, but third one, I don't know. Um, hell, I won't say more.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Sir, if you can, come, come around here. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
This is, I cannot hear. What'd they say? You can't mumble on the microphone. You have to pick up.
If you would, give your name, your address, please.
Want me to take this off?
If you would like to, you can, sir.
Let's begin to it. Charles Nigley, thirty-one, sixty-nine Rebecca Street. Okay? This is what this is about. This is about the meeting y'all had last week. What's it called, meeting? I don't have the county news, as I told you, or email. I told the county clerk yesterday where my email address is. I've had this phone for over a year. If you're gonna have a call meeting about something, let people know. First thing I want to know, note, what I want to ask is, why is this thing having to be moved? Where is, where is it going to? And who is gonna pay for it? Because I am a tax, and I, I am as a taxpayer, will refuse to pay it. I'm not gonna pay for it to be moved. Same thing I said in Jasper County. If I had been presented the petition, the trashy, trashy petition, I would throw it up, I would throw it up and throw it on the ground. It's not worth staying in. There's no reason that it has to go anywhere. That's a waste of money, and y'all know that. And I wanted it voted for it to be moved, shall, or will be one day, voted out of office. You're not gonna serve forever. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to say that I'm glad that we were able to approve our budget today. I, I think that was a great accomplishment. We have worked for months to try to, uh, get that resolved and get that done, and a lot of Zoom meetings, a lot of, uh, public hearings. And so, um, and I think the final, uh, the last hearing that we had, where we're able to really implement those additional funds where we can, um, have that rollback, I think that was a great uh, thing that we were able to do for our community and still be able to provide, you know, the services that, to our citizens, because that's what, at the end of the day, I think that's what they ultimately want, is to ensure that we're able to a, uh, approve a budget where we can still provide the services, um, for them. So, um, that was actually all I had to say. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Tonight is my, or today is my forty-first wedding anniversary.
Hey! Congratulations.
And all of us that are married know that, um, our spouses put up with a lot for us to be on the Board of Commissioners or involved with the Board of Commissioners. So, I just want to thank my husband for twelve years of sacrifice, and there've been many of times when I've been at the Board of Commissioners meeting for, uh, our anniversary. But, um, uh, it's been forty-one years of marital bliss. I can tell you that, uh, spending ten days in an RV with, driving cross-country, you gotta love it.
Commissioner Henderson? Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Steve. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very thankful of being on the board as long, as long as I have, and, and as I continue to be, and, and in politics, you never know what tomorrow might bring. But what I, what I can say, since I've been on the board, is that people have shot over my house, I never brought it back to the board. I was taking from the board home to let me know what had went on. I have ran, and people have came in my yard and spit on my sign, you know, and it had a rebel flag in the back of the truck. I never said a word. They even made videos of me doing all crazy stuff and put it online way before the statue. I never said a word. I just, I, hey, I just prayed for them and asked everybody to pray for me. And last but not least, you know, it's, it's just come a time, I think you get a certain age, when you just say what's on your mind. And glory be to God, I, I don't, I'm, I'm dead age, or close to it. And I just say what's on my mind, and I just do what's right. And I pray and ask God for his guidance, for him to lead me. And wherever he leads me, I will follow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Cowan? Yep? Um, first of all, I wanna thank Mr. Kerr and his staff for doing an amazing job, um, with this budget. Um, we started off at a certain area that we knew we wanted to be at, and it took some, um, going around in circles, but we got, we got there. Um, um, the constituents in District One and District, District Three, um, they gonna get much-needed service as, um, in fire stations. So, um, we did here, then when they came to the board, and so they will get that relief that they've been asking for, so I am definitely excited about that. Um, but I am also excited for the, the employees of, of our great county, who again will receive another, uh, increase. Um, I always say they are the engine that make this thing go, and so I'm definitely, um, excited for them, um, as well. Um, much deserved dealing with this COVID that we're dealing with. They are, they have stayed the pace, and, um, you don't hear them complaining, you don't hear them griping. Um, we got great employees, so I'm definitely excited for them. Um, lastly, I'm, um, I'm thankful to be a, a part of a bo, a board, um, who can make tough decisions and continue to work together. Um, that's what true leadership is about. Um, you don't turn on, you don't turn on each other, you continue to work together, and so I'm excited to be a part of this team. Uh, thank all of you, Commissioner Edwards, uh, Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Schultz, Commissioner Henderson, and Commissioner Cowan. Um, thank you for your courage, uh, thank you for your leadership as well. Uh, with that being said, I got some things I can add to the agenda tonight if y'all wanna hang around here. If not, I seek a motion that we adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. Did I leave anybody, left somebody out? Yep. Uh, who mo, who made the motion? Who seconded? All in favor? We stand adjourned. Pass the floor on.